Good evening. I will call to order our regular meeting, city council meeting here, February 11th, 2025. I am your mayor Brendan Kelfiss. Tonight doing the invocation will be Sylvester Scott, followed by the flag salute, which I will lead you in. If everyone could please stand and Sylvester Scott can come to the podium. Sylvester, are you out there? If not, we will have our city manager, Aaron Adams, lead us in the invocation.
Sylvester is not here. All right, would you please bow your heads with me? Dear me Father Lord, we give you thanks for this day. We give thanks for the blessing of living, working in the great city of Temecula. Lord, we believe we are a blessed city on so many levels. Yet we know there's folks that are hurting, they're suffering. Lord, we pray for them, we pray for our citizens, we pray for our businesses. Lord, I ask that you guide this city council with wisdom, with discernment in conducting the business of the city. Lord, I also ask for your protection, guidance for all city employees, especially our police and fire personnel, Lord, just protection for all the men and women that are serving our city each and every day. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Schwank.
Here.
Mayor Potem Alexander.
Here.
Mayor Kelfiss.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
All right, we'll start off with our presentation. Our first one will be from Casey Elliott, the Vice President of Townsend Public Affairs, our state lobbyist. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Casey Elliott, Vice President with Townsend Public Affairs. This evening, I just kind of want to provide everyone with a brief update and overview as to what's happening in Sacramento and what we're having to look forward to for this upcoming legislative session and how those topics that are being discussed in Sacramento might impact the city. Just to begin with, a couple of overview items. Legislature began their first year of their two-year session at the beginning of January. This session does include a rather large turnover within the legislature. Approximately a quarter of the legislature are new freshman members, so they're just coming up to Sacramento, getting directions, getting used to knowing where to go, kind of getting situated. They are, in addition to there being new members, this leads to new committee assignments, new committee chairs, new responsibilities, so lots of different ideas that are going on right now. Where we are in the legislative process right now, in two weeks, on February 21st, is the deadline to introduce new bills for the legislative session. This year will be a little bit different. Typically, in sessions past, members have been able to introduce up to 50 bills each over a two-year period. Under the rules of the House for this session, that number has been reduced to 35. So the idea being that legislators will be able to focus more on the issues that are most pressing to Californians and really kind of focus their efforts on those things that are most vital. I would say in a typical year, we would have expected probably about 2,500 bills to be introduced. Maybe this year, we'll get that down closer to 2,000, 2,200, but we'll see how that goes. Additionally, while the legislature is dealing with new bill ideas and new budget items, which I'll talk about in just a moment, also getting used to the new dynamics that are going on between the state of California and Washington DC. There's a lot of interplay right now between various items that impact state budgets, state policy, and those items are going to continue to play out likely in a pretty public manner over the coming months. Just wanted to touch on a couple of high-level issues that we anticipate the legislature to spend a significant amount of time on this year, and I'll go into a little bit more depth in each of these items. That being the state budget, continued policy around housing and land use, wildfire recovery and preparedness, as well as issues related to public safety. When we talk about the state budget, the governor released his January budget proposal on January 10th this year. The budget is roughly balanced, it's a very Sacramento term, I appreciate. The governor put forth his January budget proposal with an approximate $350 million budget surplus. That's on a total general fund spending of $229 billion, so that's why we kind of say roughly balanced, so we're kind of right in that space. That rough balancing is really by design. Last year, the legislature and the administration had about a $28 billion budget deficit that they needed to tackle, and they really took the opportunity to put together more of a two-year budget proposal. So a lot of the actions that were taken last year were with an eye towards this particular budget. As a result, we don't see a lot of new significant budget proposals. Some of the things that were in the governor's budget include the consolidation of some of the state's housing functions. Right now, housing and homelessness issues are within the same agency as consumer protections, consumer affairs, a lot of things that don't really pertain to housing. So there's a proposal to create two new entities within the state government to bifurcate those. Also, within the budget, we are seeing initial allocations from recently voted, bonds who were recently approved by voters in November, both the education bonds on the K through 12 and the higher education side, as well as climate bond funding, which covers a number of issues, including wildfire preparedness, parks, nature conservancies, many of these types of things. So we'll start seeing some additional funding flow from state agencies available to local governments, probably in Q3 and Q4 of this year, as those get programmed out in the budget. And then lastly, I wanted to mention on the items for the legislature, while the normal budget is due, legislature needs to approve that by June 15th for the upcoming fiscal year. There is currently a special session related to the budget going on right now as it pertains to recovery from the LA wildfires. So the legislature has already approved $2.5 billion in the current budget year to start the recovery and cleanup process. There will be additional budget actions coming later, but that has already happened, which again, will need to kind of get factored into this overall budget situation as the legislature moves through their deliberations. Moving forward and looking to some areas of policy, we continue to expect a number of bills related to housing and land use. While we've seen over the last decade, literally hundreds of bills a year being introduced in Sacramento related to housing and land use, this year, we might see a little bit, slightly fewer bills. There's a couple of different dynamics working there between new committee leadership, as well as the reduced bill load that may lessen the number of bills that we see. That said, we do anticipate additional legislation this year that would impact local land use and planning, things like planning for the next Rena cycle coming up in a couple of years, modifications to density bonus law, streamlining of certain projects, continue to put curbs and more parameters on builders' remedy projects, things along that sort. So I think we can anticipate some more of those, though maybe not at the volume that we've seen in the past couple of years. Additionally, the legislature is going to start working this year on placing a statewide housing bond on the 2026 ballot. In order to do that, the legislature would need to approve a measure early next year, so really this year will be a lot of conversations determining the need, determining what pots make the most sense, how that would be administered. These discussions did occur in the last legislative session, but ultimately, given the bonding capacity, the priorities were on the climate bond and the education bond, which were put on the ballot. But there are a number of legislators that want to see a housing bond go on. This could include things like funding for infill development, transgenderity and development, housing trust funds, homeownership programs, down payment assistant programs. So that'll all get kind of worked out as the legislature considers what elements they want to include in a potential bond. And then lastly, on the housing, there continues to be a significant focus in increasing the levels of homeownership. Often in Sacramento, there's discussion of the missing middle housing. How do we move folks into solid, middle-class jobs so they can afford housing in their communities where they live and work? So I think we can anticipate some additional bills to incentivize that type of housing, incentivize that type of building. In previous years, there had been budgetary proposals related to down payment assistance and other things to try to get people into homeownership, so I think we'll see a continuation of those proposals considered this year as well. Moving over to wildfire recovery and preparedness, obviously, given the tragic events that took place earlier in January in the LA region and surrounding areas, there will be a significant impact on the legislative agenda from those events. We're already seeing it. As I mentioned already, there has been some funding already dedicated towards Los Angeles. We will continue to see additional legislation specifically dedicated and focused on Southern California, helping streamline their rebuilding processes, different types of streamlining, permit reviews, expedited things. So we'll see a number of bills related specifically to the impacts in LA. Additionally, we will see a number of bills that go further than that, that go statewide to really, what are the lessons that can be learned here? What are the steps that we can be taking in communities throughout California to mitigate the potential of these deadly firestorms, to give homeowners the tools that they need to secure their properties, to give local governments the tools that they need to plan for these? So I think that we will see bills this year on mapping related to evacuation planning and route development, vegetation management, reducing the fuel loads continues to be a large focus that hopefully we'll see some significant funding behind, as well as home hardening and other resources for firefighting. I should note, just this afternoon, the Senate Legislative Leadership announced a 13-bill package that they're going to be introducing in the next week specifically related to wildfire recovery in LA and prevention. So it's a large issue. And then additionally, we have issues related to the ability to secure homeowners insurance for homes, renters and businesses. A lot of the activity in this space last year in Sacramento was left to the Department of Insurance through the regulatory process, and while those regulations will go into effect this year, I think there's a desire in Sacramento to really make sure that there's meaningful impact. Regulations are great, and those may encourage additional insurers to come back to the marketplace and started issuing new policies. However, the legislature is going to want to incentivize again both homeowners and insurance companies to take actions where individuals, businesses can then rely on that homeowner's insurance being there and not being at risk of going away if there is an event where the insurance would need to be needed. So again, I think that's going to be a major theme throughout this year. And then the last item I wanted to touch on is just public safety. As you are aware, voters overwhelmingly approved Prop 36 at the November ballot, and so we are looking in Sacramento at the implementation and funding of Proposition 36 at the local level. There is an ability now to charge folks under these new categories of felonies that require, you know, treatment and other things, so we need to make sure that counties, local governments have the resources so that people that are sentenced under these new guidelines have the resources available to them, have the services available so they can take advantage of all of those provisions. Additionally, we'll see a continued focus on organized retail theft. There was a package of bills last year, about a dozen, related to organized retail theft that went into effect at the beginning of this year. I anticipate we'll see additional bills, particularly in the areas related to shoplifting, organized crime. I know we talked about vehicle break-ins, mail theft, so a lot of those items that really kind of hit at the local level. Should also note that this year, the Public Safety Committee has new chairs in both the Assembly and the Senate. Both of the new chairs do come from local government, so they have a lot of experience dealing with many of these issues at the local level, so hopefully we'll see that translate into some of the policies that they consider. And then as we look at those local issues, I do anticipate some additional legislation on issues related to fentanyl, safety around e-bikes, vehicle break-ins, reckless driving, so some of those things we see more at the community level where really it's just kind of reaching this crescendo where Sacramento needs to provide local governments additional tools to really be able to take on some of these issues. So all of that said, what do I do for you guys? Kind of the big question. You know, in addition to providing updates, you know, I'm in constant communication with the city staff. I would say that you guys have one of, if not the best legislative directors in the state that I get to work with, so it's always a pleasure connecting with city staff here. So providing that information, doing those check-ins. Recently, you approved your legislative platform, so we'll be taking that, using that as a communication piece and a tool to check in on, not just with your legislators, but those that are on the committees that impact the issues that we look at, really kind of give them an idea of where the city's priorities are, what types of legislation we want to see, we don't want to see, really so we can serve as a resource for them in that capacity. And then as I noted, with the turnover within the legislature, significant amount of time at this time of the year is really spent on relationship development, really kind of telling the Temecula story, the regional story, making sure that people understand that the issues that are being faced here are not one-size-fits-all, and we can't have one-size-fits-all solutions in Sacramento. We really need to recognize the uniqueness and the values of our communities in the legislative planning process. And then just in the nearer term, also planning for the state budget, what are those funding advocacy priorities? What opportunities are there for securing programs or funding or benefits for the city through part of that budget process? So with that, I am happy to answer questions on any of these items or any other items, and I just thank everyone for their time.
Thank you very much, Casey. Now, I know there's lots of bills and legislation that will be following via our legislation platform, and we appreciate your advocacy for Temecula and Sacramento, and we look forward to seeing you in Sacramento in April. Any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Councilmember Stewart?
So with the fires, I know there's a lot of speculation that the state insurance fund may be insolvent with the amount of money that they're going to be paying out, because I heard like 70% of all those homes that burnt were insured by the state. So do you have any light you can shed on that?
Yeah, great question. So a couple of things. Under the Fair Plan, last year, legislation was approved that would allow the insurers that pay into the Fair Plan to have some tools to generate additional dollars from their full customer base to put into the Fair Plan in the case of insolvency, which isn't necessarily great to hear, but it does keep it solvent. Additionally, there has been legislation already introduced which would allow the state to issue disaster recovery bonds for the purpose of ensuring that there's adequate funding to pay out all the Fair Plan claims. That would essentially leverage the state's credit rating and those types of things. It would be, I forget the exact payback mechanism it is, but ultimately, the state would be able to leverage their bonding capacity to generate probably a couple of billion dollars to put into the Fair Plan. Obviously, that's legislation that would still need to be approved in an expedited fashion, but that conversation is already occurring, and I think both the governor and legislative leadership have indicated that they have no intention of allowing the Fair Plan to become insolvent. They want to make sure that all of those policyholders have an opportunity to be made whole, but at the same time, they also want to move people off of the Fair Plan. The state ultimately doesn't want its general fund to be the backstop for any insurance claims going forward. So I think that's why we'll see a lot more legislation and working groups trying to encourage private insurers to come back and issue policies in California.
In a private briefing that we had, you had mentioned, I think, the city clerk also mentioned that there is a e-bike law that just went into effect, basically stating any e-bike going, that can go more than 20 miles an hour is considered illegal, and any modifications done to an e-bike is also considered illegal. Do you have, you told me what the state law was.
Yeah.
It was like two...
Yeah, SB 1271 from last year was approved, and that measure for certain categories of e-bikes, essentially those that go over 20 miles an hour, those under state law no longer get categorized as e-bikes, those essentially fall into categories closer to that of motorcycles and other things, so then become subject to kind of rules of the road, as opposed to just rules that would govern bikes. So we have that bill coming online. There's definitely a number of legislators in the coastal regions that are interested and continue to pursue e-bike safety-related legislation, liability-related legislation on e-bikes. So I think that's going to be an area where we'll continue to see, you know, a handful of bills every year, really trying to kind of put some parameters and some guidelines in to ensure that, you know, these e-bikes are operated in a way that's safe for the riders as well as for the rest of the community.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schwank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Casey, thank you for being here. I think we know what you do, but the community might not, so it's always nice for you to be able to come and give a presentation like this so our community knows what you're doing in Sacramento. I'm on our behalf. You said a couple of things, I mean, you said a lot of things that we've sort of talked through and talked about, but one thing you mentioned, and just paraphrasing, and I believe this as well, Temecula, we have some unique issues that need a voice in Sacramento, right? So oftentimes, Sacramento will think of Southern California as all just one great big suburb, and that's just not necessarily true. We know we have Senator Sartor and Assemblymember Sanchez in Sacramento, but I just want to say, it's nice and I appreciate your voice in the halls of the Capitol on a daily basis, working on behalf of our residents up there. So I just want to say thank you to you and to Townsend. You do a wonderful job on behalf of the residents of our city, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ron?
Yeah, I mean, just echo what Zach said. It was great meeting with you today. It's great to see you're still our legislative advocate in Sacramento. You've done an outstanding job for our community for many years now, and just appreciate all the hard work you're doing. I know we're going to have a lot of issues come up this year that I think are important for the city, especially when we talk about, you know, fire risk, housing, transportation, you know, but I know you're a great advocate for our community and appreciate working with you in Sacramento every chance we get.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. We'll see you soon.
Thank you, everyone.
Next up, we'll have an impromptu presentation by Read Across America Kids. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. We have Temecula Elementary School, we have our president and vice president of student council, and they want to present something to our city council.
Good evening. My name is Fox Cooper, and I'm the student council vice president at Temecula Elementary School.
Good evening. My name is Olivia, and I'm the student council president at Temecula Elementary School. We're here today to inform you about an exciting event happening at our school on February 28th that celebrates the importance of reading. February 28th, we will be celebrating Read Across America.
We invite you to celebrate with us by coming to our school and reading in one of our classrooms. If you would like to join us and haven't signed up already for this event, we were supposed to be given flyers for the whole council, but tonight we only have one. But scan on the QR code attached to the flyer being given to you. We look forward to having you at our school and celebrating this day with you. Thank you for your time. Is there someone I can give the flyer to?
Well, thank you, Mr. Cooper and Ms. Olivia. I know myself and a few of my council colleagues will be there. We will see you Friday. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, we will move on to our Board and Commission reports, starting off with Community Services Commission, Commissioner Hawks. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Dr. Yuen Hawks. I am the chairwoman of the Community Services Commission. It's my pleasure to provide you with an update from our most recent meeting, which was last night. First, I'd like to express how honored I am and humbled I am to work alongside my fellow commissioners, Ernie Castro, Jeff Kingsburg, Cassie Seismore, and LaSalle DeGrave. They're truly committed to the betterment of our community. As an advisory commission, we focus on the topics related to parks and recreation services. Next slide. We began the meeting with manager introductions where we met most of the managers listed here. I want to point out that Jeff Lawrence will be retiring next month after 32 years of dedicated service, concluding his remarkable career with the city. In community outreach, the commissioners were excited about the baseball jersey design for the Temecula takeover at the Storm Stadium this summer. It's an exciting opportunity to showcase Temecula. For homeless outreach, Lacy Sizzler gave a thorough presentation on the successes and the challenges her division faces. The report closely mirrors her report at last month's council meeting. We also had a presentation and an in-depth discussion about the Old Town Special Events and Road Closures. Commissioners brainstormed and brought different perspectives to the conversation. Mike Wooton and Tracy Tominas will be presenting to the city council next month. Lastly, we added one item to our agenda concerning the future of the commission, which we will discuss at our next meeting. I look forward to bringing back the collective feedback for the council to consider as you make your decision on this important issue. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to our Traffic Safety Commission report with Commissioner Maddox.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, neighbors. Good to be with you all tonight. At our last meeting, we began with the swearing-in of Commissioner Larry Slusser, who was appointed in November. Larry and his family put their roots down in Temecula almost 25 years ago. In that time, Larry has worked in local urgent care, has been an active volunteer and leader in the interfaith community and the community at large. We were joined by many of Larry's family members at the ceremony, and we're happy to welcome him to the team. With that, our current roster includes Commissioner Larry Slusser, Skip Carter, J.R. Richardson, and myself. And as always, your Traffic Safety Commission meets on the fourth Thursday of each month to review and make recommendations on topics related to speed zones, stop signs, signals, pavement markings, traffic design, and engineering. Continuing on with the agenda of our January meeting, we approved our prior action minutes with unanimous vote. Then our next business item was the selection of the Chair and Vice Chair for 2025. I'm honored to continue on as Chair this year, serving alongside Commissioner Carter as Vice Chair. Lastly, the final business item of the night was a receive-and-file report on the work-in-progress roundabout design for Jedediah Smith, Deportola, and Inez Road. So this intersection is especially important to those who live closest to it. It also holds significance to the Temecula Loop Trail and the overall circulation element of the city at large. The commission was informed that the status of the project is at 60% design, with funding identified in the form of a federal grant, as well as the Developer Impact Street Improvements Fund. We also reviewed the conceptual design. Three highlights include crosswalk setbacks to provide distinct decision points for cars, pedestrian refuge islands to make it safer to cross one lane of traffic at a time, and a raised truck apron to accommodate horse trailers that are fairly common in the equestrian neighborhood there. So there are dozens more individual design elements, but for now, I'll just conclude it there by acknowledging the tremendous amount of community input, expertise, and care that is being put into this planning process, and it's all in an effort to make these roads more safe, efficient, convenient, and connected. So I look forward to seeing how that one continues to develop, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for that report. Any questions? Mayor Potem Alexander?
Hi, Mr. Maddox. A quick question for you, just out of curiosity. I was able to go to the HOA meeting. Did you have many people come to this meeting that you guys ended up having about the roundabout? And if so, what were some of the questions or probably some of the same things we've been hearing? So I just want to check in.
Right, so we actually did not have any at our most recent meeting. I think... Right. So we actually did not have any at our most recent meeting. I think they mostly got their information from the community meeting that you helped host in December with all of them. I know that was posted online, and they had a chance to ask a bunch of questions there. They have been very involved in our meetings in the past. We've seen record turnout and comments from them. A lot of concerns about the speeds there. I hear a lot of consensus about trying to lower those speeds through additional traffic calming, and this project may help with that.
Agreed. All right. Well, thank you.
All right, moving on to our public safety report, our Temecula Fire Chief Crater.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and citizens of Temecula. Yeah, January was a busy month for us in the city. We ran 985 calls. Of those 985 calls, we had 15 fires, 78 traffic collisions, and 725 medical emergencies, and various other calls for service. Next slide. It's not just the calls we run. It's the community outreach. We had some elementary students come to Station 12 in Old Town. They had a lot of questions: where we live, what we do, how long we're there. And we were able to share with them a lot of things: home exit drills, fire safety, and then also show them what firefighters look like in our gear. Some of these kids have never seen a firefighter in their gear, so we don't want the first time they see us showing up to emergency at their house in our turnouts to be afraid of us. And we teach them to come to us instead of run from us. So, very good event. We do these a lot. We just don't really talk about them, and I think it's time to start doing those things. We have five scheduled this month, so we'll continue that with our community outreach. And it's always fun to have the children and the parents come to the fire station and visit with us. So we are talking about the Eaton and Palisades fire. I've been getting a few questions on what we did when we went there. I had mentioned last month that we sent three engines out of the city of Temecula and the state engine out of Station 12. I think it's important that I share some numbers. The fire chief, Bill Weiser, and command staff sent 38 engines to the Palisades and Eaton fire to help our neighbors, four dozers, various hand crews, and over 300 personnel to stand up incident management teams to help the citizens in both of these devastated areas. All while, just here in Riverside County, Temecula, and the surrounding areas, we responded to 222 fires during that week, and averaged about 650 calls a day out of our command center. So, what did our guys do from '73 and all our engines that went to the Eaton and Palisades fire? I'm going to show you a quick video. I think that it's important that even though there was a lot of devastation, there is some good news stories and some uplifting stories from that. So if you could play the video, please?
Wildfires.
But for one Eaton fire victim, her heroes were just down the freeway in Temecula.
That's right. KCal's Joy Benedict introduces us to the woman who fought to preserve her home and the firefighters who arrived just in time.
Everything all across the street was in flames.
It's a morning no one in Altadena will soon forget. Certainly not Devora Ross.
Amper's this big floating through the air. It's like a dream or something.
She stood outside her home on Olive Avenue, trying to save it with a garden hose, and prayed for a miracle.
I was screaming and hollering, and I got real scared because dark in the soot.
With moments to spare and flames roaring around her through the dark ash, she saw a different flash of red.
Then the two trucks pulled up. This big, tall, white guy gets out of the fire truck, and he jumps up and he says, "My name is Will, and I'm getting ready to save your house." And I said to him, while he was walking, I said, "You don't give a blink about my house." And he said, "Ma'am, I am not going to let your house burn down. I am not going to let your house burn down."
And he and his crew saved it.
In my home, I just got smoke damage.
Walking around her home almost four weeks later, still damaged and smoky, Ms. Ross can't help but remember the brave men she now calls her heroes.
Will, if you're out there, thank you. I love you guys.
With a little searching, we realized we were there too. We're here on Olive right now. And the crew wasn't too far away. The four firefighters who showed up that day came from Cal Fire Riverside Station 73 in Temecula.
Did you find Will?
I did. I found Will. He's right here.
Good afternoon, Devora.
Captain Will Smith has been a firefighter for more than 20 years.
Was there anything about Devora that made you remember her?
Oh, yeah, her stubbornness. She was very adamant about staying and doing what she could to defend her home.
Captain Smith and his crew were already on shift when they got the call to go to the Eaton fire that Tuesday night. He says they had already been up for more than 24 hours when firefighter Cameron Cable saw Ms. Ross.
I was surprised to find an old lady with a really sweet-looking hat trying to put that house out.
He grabbed his captain and fellow crew members and went to work.
It's a good memory to have. Definitely, we won't forget it. We won't forget her.
In fact, they found her again two days later when she showed up to get clothes and took this photo. But then it was back to work for three weeks in Altadena. But with thousands of homes lost, they admit saving her home is bittersweet.
In stark contrast to, you know, all the homes that we didn't save, because it's not a good feeling. I won't ever forget those either.
Uh-uh, what did I tell you?
But for today, these firefighters say they will savor the joy of this one homeowner and smile that they made a difference on this street and were able to fulfill their promise to Ms. Ross and give her something to come home to.
I need to see Will, to give him a big hug and tell him thank you. Those guys saved my house.
Joy Benedict, KCal News.
Super uplifting, and we pray for all the fire victims and super proud of all our firefighters that responded to both the Palisades and Eaton fire. And they made a difference. They really did. And we truly appreciate the city of Temecula's support. It's second to none. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that, Chief. And please give Captain Smith and firefighter Cable our kudos and our thanks. And it's important to note that even though we sent firefighters out to Palisades and the Eaton fire, we were still adequately staffed here in Temecula. And that's a thank you to you, Chief, for ensuring that our citizens remain safe and protected even while we're in other counties and cities, helping them out as well.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, moving on. We will move to our public comments, non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have three public comments on non-agendized items. The rules are in the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The first speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by Gary Adi.
Good evening.
Hi. All right. Laurel Lamont, Upward Community. I formed Upward Community to represent the local workforce, because it wasn't and still isn't represented by our representatives. Politicians as a whole aren't trusted. You are all politicians. I want to trust you. I want to believe you. I want to believe in you. I do. That bridge works both ways. I can't constantly, or I can and I will, chase you down for meetings. But you should be actively pursuing meetings with me and the workforce. Community outreach should also exist within the workforce. Your Sacramento representatives, they should be advocating for the workforce. It felt really good to hear housing repeated over and over again, and it felt even better to hear that the state is acknowledging that we need more homeownership options. We cannot go backwards. Housing is not going to lose its value. Raising the minimum wage, nationally, that needed to be done a long time ago. But here in California, we make well over the federal minimum wage, and we cannot afford the communities we serve. What are you doing? If I may remind you, the Brown Act does not prohibit you from making a comment on my comment. It just prohibits you from turning it into an action item. I get that. Please, let's talk about this. Let me know. Let the workforce know. You are paying attention. You're listening. You're hearing, and you care. Everything comes back to housing. Everything. Incarceration rates, housing and community. Traffic, housing and community. Homelessness, housing and community. Everything is connected to housing. Pollution, housing. We need to be willing to admit when we've made mistakes and do better. Let's do better. I'm not going anywhere.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
The next speaker is Gary Adi, to be followed by Eric Faulkner.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Koffis, Mayor Pro Tim Alexander. I'm Gary Adi, president of Bike Temecula Valley. I'm sorry, former president, founder of Bike Temecula Valley. This is our current president, Ernie Castro, who's doing an amazing job. Ernie and I would like to share with you some of the collaborations we're involved in with agencies, municipalities, and districts as we work towards our vision of safe streets here in Temecula Valley. We're encouraged to hear a robust discussion about safe streets here in these chambers, including Lieutenant Pearson's presentation on e-bike safety in the previous council meeting. Tonight, I'd like to share just a short list of the collaborations that we're involved with and ask for your continued support. Bike Temecula Valley helps coordinate and attends quarterly meetings for Temecula Active Transportation Community Advisory Committee, the TATCAP. This committee provides two-way communication on active transportation, as city staff reports to the community members, and then the community members provide input coming from varying perspectives. Our affiliate program, Caught With Your Helmet On, under the guidance of Angeline and Brian Fowler, has provided free helmets to youth, the fire department, Temecula PD, and CHP. They've donated bikes and rewarded thousands of Temecula youth with gift certificates from multiple Temecula businesses when those youth are caught with their helmet on. Alongside Caught With Your Helmet On, BTV volunteers have provided and supported bike education at every Temecula Valley Unified School District Elementary School. I know your comment last week, or your question last week about private schools, and we're on that. We're going to really work. We have some connections there for you. And if you have any suggestions, please contact us. BTV is a part of TVUSD Bicycle and E-Bike Safety Education Program that is being prepared to roll out for next school year. So we're really getting close to having our opening ceremonies on that and rolling it out next year. BTV is hopeful that we can continue to collaborate with the city of Temecula to curb unsafe behaviors by those who use our streets, including illegal and dangerous use of e-motocycles. As a safety advocacy group, we are thankful for all the city has done, yet we believe that the real power of safe Temecula streets will be a result of merging our good ideas and programs together. And then, as I said to Mayor Pro Tim, we are a resource for you. I know Councilmember Stu, you had a question about e-bikes at the state. We work with Cal Bike and have an understanding of those legislations. So we're here as a resource for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The last speaker is Eric Faulkner.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, city council staff. I'll be quick. I heard the discussion about the commissions and boards, and just want to make a couple of comments about it. So I think the career and process is really transparent. I really like the fact that people put in application. They come in front of you. Everyone up here gets the opportunity to speak with them, evaluate them based on the 18 or 20 you may have in the room in regards to their CVs, in regards to how they present in that space. So I think it gives the city council the opportunity to review the best and the brightest. And I think if city council really wants to get more people involved in it, look throughout your districts and figure out who those smart people are and have them apply to it and come actually to be present in front of you to actually select who the top candidates are. I think a decline in some of the people coming out has been the political climate. It's been tough, and a lot of people are staying away from commission positions and not putting in for them because of that. I think that's the major obstacle in regards to getting people there. I think city council, you know, we can do other things in our districts to make sure we pull out the best and the brightest by communicating and marketing it from your, in the community, you're talking to people, making sure they apply for these positions as well. And our commissions can do a lot to go about and make sure people apply as well. I'm just concerned about transparency, because I've seen it go wrong. If individually, if selecting people, and I'm not saying anyone here would be nefarious in that, I just think they feel a loyalty to the person that's selecting them versus having an open forum. So that could lead to, you know, just some things that, you know, that shouldn't be aligned where we should be at. So I agree with the term limits concern you had. I just think that when you have great commissioners, and David and Mrs. Hawks there, it's hard to let them go. I mean, because they build a rapport, they build this credibility while they're doing the job. And if you have people come behind them with what they've done for the city, it's tough to replace them. So I think talking about that is something we should. I think we just have a lot of great people that want to be involved in the city, and we can do better there. I want to save the remainder of my time to say, Captain Regali, I want to put a shout-out to him. He came to our street. As you know, we had a homicide, not on my street, but on the street leading to the cul-de-sac in January. And one of the things I did was really galvanize the community, got a meeting together, got him. I was hoping he was, I thought he was going to send one of the sergeants out, but he came individually, and we met at a piece of the place. And we actually put the residents at ease in regards to what happened, and they're very comfortable with that. They share their concerns, and I just want to put a plug out to him for doing that. And we continue to navigate our way through that, but know that, you know, neighbors are helping neighbors and connecting with one another. So again, just a testament to the great leadership we have in our city. So I just wanted to share this as well. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, any other public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to our city council reports. We will start with Councilmember Stewart.
Oh, I believe I have one slide. Do I not? Yes. The Rod Run. So today, I believe, we actually officially opened the registration for the Rod Run, and the entire front street is already taken. So now it's all the side streets and the parking lots. So if you haven't gotten your ticket to the Rod Run as far as one to shine a show, now would be the time. But we're doing something a little different this year in the fact you have to register for the cruise night. So the Friday Night Cruise is not just going to be open to everyone. You have to register, because we want to control the number of cars cruising, because last year it was a parking lot. So we had between 400 and 500 cars show up, and it was just, no cars were moving. And when you have an old car, that's not a good thing. So this year, we're limiting the number of cars. So if you want to cruise, get on the website. I don't know if it's open yet.
No, the cruise night registration opens on Tuesday, March 18th.
Okay.
And it's going to be $10 per car.
Got it. So there you go. That was my slide. All right, thank you. Thank you. And when is the Rod Run this year? What's the exact date? Do we have that?
First weekend in May, so that would be... Sorry.
Sorry.
It's the second and third.
May 2nd and 3rd, Rod Run. All right.
And we sold out, registration opened at 8:00 a.m., and we sold out, I think, about 500 spaces within the first couple hours, out of 564. So we're down to like roughly 60 spots in Epperson Lot if anybody wants them.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ron?
Thanks. So I know it's a little early for this, but there's a method to the madness. I think there's a slide, hopefully. So April 12, we're doing a City of Temecula Community Cleanup. We'll be meeting at Pachanga Creek, and details will be published soon on this. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up is because I love the community cleanup events, but just around, you know, my own neighborhood and taking walks with the... just around, you know, my own neighborhood and taking walks with the, with the dog, you know, we're noticing more trash and more, more things and some of the drainages and on the sides of the road. And so one of the things I will be bringing back to council for a future item to discuss is, is just, how do we, you know, because the big cleanup events, when you get to, you know, Pachanga Creek or Temecula Creek, we know, you know, it takes a team of folks like you see here from the last event. But there's smaller areas around our own neighborhoods that probably could use a little extra love that, you know, may not be a part of a big cleanup event. So I'd like to be able to organize smaller events, you know, periodically, year-round, where we can kind of get at that. Because as I was walking through the other day, I was just, I took a couple pictures. I know it's not as exciting as I'd hoped it would, but you could see some of the trash and bottles and things that are sort of accumulated there. And we, you know, we all love the community, we love the way it looks, and I think we can all figure out a way to make sure it's safe and clean. So appreciate your patience, and I hope more folks are able to show up on April 12th.
Love that. Thank you. Councilmember Schwank?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If we could throw up my first slide. Well, the long-awaited Temecula Pickleball Complex grand opening is fast approaching. Whoop-whoop, as the community says. Saturday, February 15th at 1:00 PM. Join us as we cut the ribbon and we start what is probably the, is it still the fastest-growing sport? How long can it be the fastest-growing sport? I don't know, but it's clearly a popular sport in our community, and we're happy to be able to provide this 17-court wonderful amenity to the community. So join us again Saturday, February 15th for that ribbon cutting. Very exciting. Next slide. And there's been a little chatter online regarding the Temecula Skate Park renovation. We cut a little snag, I don't need to get too into the weeds in it, but it's going to be delayed a little bit. But I wanted to sort of remind the community that, you know, the plan all along was to create these infill amenities, right? So these little skate plazas throughout the community, so everyone didn't have to hop in the car, you know, travel all the way across town to get to the skate park. This was opened not too long ago at Long Canyon Creek Park, and we're always looking for ways to enhance our parks. But as we sort of work out the details of the Temecula Skate Park renovation, just know, you know, it is on hold, not indefinitely, but we hit a little snag, like I said, and we will get through it for sure. But really, the core of it is these little skate parks. And I was reminded the other day with some folks online, with neighborhood drop-ins, sort of reminded me of that overall vision. And so I thought it'd be nice to highlight that vision. And this is a wonderful skate park. It's busy all the time, so I'm really excited for it. Next slide. All right, and today we started our Phase 1 of this Old Town Parking Sensors. So maybe you've seen some posts, I think we did a social media post online about it. We're trying to collect real-time data with respect to parking in Old Town, right? Like anecdotally, if you asked 10 people, nine and a half would tell you that parking's horrible, and they could never find a place to park. But the reality is, is like, we don't actually know, right? So we need to understand what's going on. And so we've installed 90 sensors today in Old Town from, from that Northern Arch to Main Street. And what those sensors will do is it'll, it'll monitor occupancy, so if someone's parked there, how long they're parked there, and then when that turns over. We certainly won't be collecting any personal data, we don't record license plates or photographs. This is just, is there a car in this parking spot? And the hope is, in that Phase 2, is to finish Old Town with the remaining public parking spaces, so we can have a better understanding of the parking challenges, where they are, where they aren't. And then the data that we do receive, so if you're a parking wonk like us up here, you can attend the Old Town Local Advisory Committee where they're going to have a standing item to sort of download these monthly reports and let the community know what's going on as we sort of start to learn the parking challenges in Old Town. So, next slide. And I wanted to talk a little bit about more parking in Old Town because we've made significant investments in public parking in Old Town. So currently, public supply in Old Town is over 1,700 spaces. These are all public, they're all completely free. 285 are in the parking garage. We've recently reconfigured the Roger Epperson, sorry, Memorial Parking Lot, which is behind the Stampede, adding 58 spaces. We magically found 58 spaces, wonderful. We paved the town square parking lots, which used to just be dirt, and added supply there. And then we're actually leasing out a piece of property next to the roadway inn over on First Street to provide additional parking in Old Town. So we certainly made some significant parking investments in Old Town. And then finally, you know, so not all parking in Old Town is free. Unfortunately, there is some pay parking, but I want the community to know that the pay parking in Old Town is all on private parking lots. So these are private property owners that have decided to charge for parking on their private lot. So the, again, the city doesn't charge any parking, any fees to park on any public parking lots or spaces that we have. So some of these lots are, the charges are extremely high, they often don't seem reasonable. I've heard of folks getting tickets for parking, and the tickets are extremely expensive. I might know someone in my family that did that, maybe not, but it's not an enjoyable thing to have happen, right? A couple of the other investments that we've made is the city app. You're able to log onto the city app and see real-time what is available at our public parking facilities. And then we've added those digital signboards at the north and south end of town. The reason that I bring this forward is this is always a significant issue, and it's a concern not just to the businesses but to the residents. And I want folks to, again, attend the Old Town Local Review Board meetings to sort of learn as we learn some of the parking challenges and, and maybe ways that we can enhance the experience of coming to Old Town. And what an experience it is, right? Like a few years ago, many of you probably would have never even come down to Old Town. And Old Town is an extremely vibrant and wonderful place to be, but we're having some growing pains, and as the city is always working hard to tackle those challenges. So that's my parking update for the week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Alexander. Nothing? All right. I don't have anything either. So we will move on to our consent calendar. Item number one, we will waive the reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Item number two, approve action minutes of January 28th, 2025. Number three, approve listed demands. Item number four, approve city treasurer's report for the periods of November 1st, 2024 through November 30th, 2024, and December 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Item number five, approve increase of excess liability insurance policy with Arch Specialty and Acceptance Casualty Insurance Companies. Item number six, approve agreement with Willdan Engineering for the Rancho California Road Meeting and Improvements Project, PW 23-04. Item number seven, approve agreement with RHA Landscape Architects Planners, Inc. for the Bike Lane and Trail Program, Ronald Reagan Sports Park Trails Project, PW 22-05. Would any of my colleagues like to pull an item?
I'll move approval.
The item has been moved and seconded. We will now vote. That consent calendar passes unanimously, 5 to 0. I will now recess the city council meeting and hand it over to President Schwank of the TCSD meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, please note that we're all still here. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, we'll go and dispense with the reading of those rules. We'll move on to our consent calendar. We have item number eight, action minutes, I'm sorry, approve action minutes of January 28th, 2025. And item nine, approve sponsorship agreement and First Amendment for various nonprofits for use of city facilities. I will entertain a motion and a second.
I will move approval.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Let us please vote. Okay, and that passes 5 to 0. Thank you, everyone. Do we have a Director of Community Services report this evening? Director Russo?
We do, just two quick slides. I just wanted to highlight some of the things we're doing here for American Black History Month. Over at the museum, which is right next to Sam Hicks Monument Park at that end of Old Town, you can just drive right by on your way out, we are happy to host the exhibit, "I Am a Man." And that is a collection of photographs taken by everything from renowned photojournalists to just everyday people documenting the civil rights movement between 1960 and 1970, and really focusing on how this movement was just integrated into daily life in the American South. That will be on display from February 4th until March 16th. I really encourage everyone to stop by. Entry is just a donation basis, so it's totally free. See a lot of students in the audience, please take the time to head on over and check that out. As part of that exhibit, we will be featuring a gallery talk by Joy Miller. Joy is a lecturer at CSU San Marcos and a doctoral student in African-American Studies at UC San Diego. And she's doing this gallery talk in conjunction with our exhibit focusing on the civil rights movement. That will be February 15th at noon. Again, not to be missed, really, really, just a great opportunity for free enriching educational events here in Temecula. And the next slide, this was actually this past Saturday, let's see, thank you. This past Saturday, we hosted Chloe Arnold's Syncopated Ladies. And it was this past Saturday, and it sold out. We added a second show, and the second show did very well as well. And I just wanted to highlight this because if you have a chance, if you're at all interested in dance, tap, hip-hop, anything of the sort, you owe it to yourself to go on YouTube, just look up Syncopated Ladies, they're based out of LA. And they went viral when they recorded a tap routine to Beyonce's Formation. And it was just, it just blew up. Beyonce put it on her own homepage and really led these ladies in this group to worldwide fame. So take a few minutes, go to YouTube, look it up. We had this group in our very own theater. It's just the type of high-quality entertainment you see here in Temecula. So that concludes my report.
Great, thank you very much, Director Russo. General Manager, anything?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much. Board of Directors, anything? All right, seeing nothing, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting back to the city council.
All right. I'm now calling to order the joint meeting of the City Council and Community Services District. We have one item on the joint consent calendar. Item number 10, approves fiscal 2024-2025 mid-year budget adjustments. Do we have any comments or anyone want to talk about that item? If not, I would like a motion to move the item.
Motion.
Second. We have a first and a second. Will we please vote? And that passes unanimously. I will now adjourn the joint meeting. The successor agency, the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, we do not have a meeting. We have no meeting for the Temecula Housing Authority, no meeting for the Temecula Public Financing Authority. So I will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. We have four public hearing items tonight. We will start with number 11, introduce ordinance amending Title 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding off-site wayfinding signs within the Temecula Auto Mall. Can I get a staff report, please?
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Mark Collins, I'll be presenting this item. As mentioned, this is project number LR 24-0435, amending Title 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code to implement auto mall wayfinding signage. Okay, a little bit of background, the Temecula Municipal Code was originally adopted by the city council in 1990. Since its adoption, this body has regularly made various amendments to the code to improve its clarity, improve processes, and to implement council policy. Okay. Discussion, the city, in working with auto dealers, proposed a comprehensive wayfinding program to help ease navigation along Inez and improve customer experience at all the auto dealerships in the city. A little bit of background on the auto dealerships, they are a substantial employer, they generate roughly 30% of all city income tax or sales tax, forgive me, and they also provide 10 or so youth externships per year at the various auto dealers. The proposed ordinance would amend Section 17.28050, the exempt sign section, to allow for off-premise wayfinding signage specific to the auto mall. Sign design, although this proposed ordinance does not select or propose any specific signage, staff feels it appropriate to share the design selected by the City Council Beautification Subcommittee. Councilmember Stewart and Mayor Protem Alexander. Okay. The proposed signage, we have a total of four signs, they'll roughly be all 12 feet tall, 6 feet wide, 3 feet in depth. They'll be solar-powered with uplighting. Three of these signage signs will be single-sided with one being double-sided. The base is designed to match the existing branding we have coming into and out of the city on Highway 79 North and South, so you'll have that nice cohesiveness of the signage. Okay? Where this ordinance has been, this started with the City Council Infrastructure Beautification Subcommittee on June 11th, Councilmembers Stewart and Alexander. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission Municipal Code Maintenance Update Subcommittee on November 20th, Commissioners Bob Hagel and Adam Ruiz. And then the Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number 2025-01 on January 15th of 2024, recommending the council adopt the proposed ordinance. Staff seek a determination. Staff has determined that this ordinance is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Equality Act pursuant to Section 15061B3, common sense exemption. Okay? Staff's recommendation is that the city council introduce and read by title only the proposed ordinance. This completes my report, and I'm available for questions, as is our economic development team.
Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions of staff?
I'll just make a statement. So I obviously, I definitely really like this, this item. I like what you guys are, you know, putting together, especially as the fact that this weekend, I just was looking for a car and then trying to find the place where I needed to find the car. So I just know, even just from personal recent, recent experience, this is going to be really helpful, and especially with the beautification part to it. You guys did a great job. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I will now open the public hearing. Do we have any comments? No comments? I will now close the public hearing. And unless there's further discussion, I will take a motion to approve the item.
Motion.
Has been motioned and seconded, seconded by Councilmember Ron. And that motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on to item number 12, consider fourth amendment to the Temecula Regional Center Specific Plan, long-range project number LR 23-0494. Can I get a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Kalphus, councilmembers. As you stated, this is LR 23-0494 of the Temecula Regional Center Specific Plan Amendment Number 4. So this is a specific plan amendment for a technical change to the document so the square footage in the specific plan reflects existing conditions or entitled projects. The SPA does not propose any new square footage that is not already constructed, under construction, or is entitled or vested. So a little bit of background on the specific plan area. In 1994, the Temecula Regional Center SP was approved by the City of Temecula City Council. Since that time, the specific plan has been amended in July of 99, January of '03, and July of '08. In December of 2023, the City of Temecula initiated the specific plan amendment number 4. So why did we decide to do this? So for the last 10 years or so, we keep getting inquiries from potential applicants, potential developers that want to do a restaurant, or a retail, or a commercial outlet in the mall, usually inside Ring Road, that's the popular spot in one of the parking lots. Staff's been under the assumption during this time that there was only between 100 and 500 square feet available to be built. And if you went over that square feet, you know, you started how to do environmental, sequo, that adds time, that adds money to projects, so developers didn't want to do that. In 2023, we had a potential applicant come to the city and say, "We've done our own square footage analysis, we believe you guys have enough square footage for us to do a commercial outlet." We didn't know what to say, but we figured, we need to do the analysis now. So one, we have an answer for them, two, we have an answer for everyone else that wants to do this. So in December 2023, we started this analysis, so now we're finally at the point where we can bring it to you today. So this is the specific plan area. Some of the outlets within the specific plan area are the Mall Core and Main Street, Costco, the Phil's Barbecue, Carl Strauss and Benihana area, Islands and Chick-fil-A, and then the Total Wine and Nordstrom Rack. So in order for us to determine the existing conditions of entitled projects, staff had to do a couple different things. We had to determine the location of the planning areas 1 and 2, and I'll show you how we did that. We consulted with the Promenade Temecula Management for Gross Leasable Area Data. We researched all of the existing building permits and entitlements within the specific plan area. We determined the percentage of buildings located along the planning area's boundary line. And then we worked directly with Brookfield Properties, who's the majority owner of the Mall Core property, to ensure the accuracy. And then we worked directly with Brookfield Properties, who's the majority owner of the Mall Core property, to ensure the accuracy of our analysis. So, this is what we had to work with. We had a hard copy from the specific plan showing planning areas one and two. We didn't have anything digital. So, from that, we went to this. So, how did we get to this? Because there's, we didn't really know where to start, but we realized, within the specific plan, it gives very specific acreages for planning areas one and two. So, planning area one is 79.13 acres, planning area two is 97.91 acres. So, those planning area acreages have to say the same. So, we were able to take the existing land use plan, take that line between one and two, and then figure out the acreages using our aerial and our GIS department. So, thinking about this, if you move that line a little bit on the north, the acreages are off, so you'd have to move it a little bit on the south. So, it's a fine line in order to get those acreages exactly right. So, these show all the buildings within the specific plan area and the square footages. So, we consulted with the Promenade Temecula Management for the Gross Leasable Area, which is all the data with inside the ring road. We researched all the other existing building permits and entitlements in the SP area, so that's each of those blue buildings on the outside. We determined the percentage of buildings located along the planning area's boundary line, so that red line, you see it bisects a couple different buildings in the specific plan area, so again, we used our GIS department. So, in this instance, we determined that Edward Cinema is an 85-15 split in favor of planning area one. And Lazy Dog is a 74-26 split, also in favor of planning area one. So, June of last year, staff got comfortable where we were with the analysis, we engaged Brookfield Properties to ensure the accuracy of the analysis. We didn't want to bring this to a public hearing, and then Brookfield shows up, and then like, "Where'd you guys get your numbers?" So, they have, you know, Brookfield, they have a whole analytical department, we gave them our numbers, they used some of their numbers, there was back and forth from June until October. We finally got comfortable with Brookfield, and they got comfortable with us, so we were able to bring this forward to public hearing. So, the results of that analysis, planning area one, we weren't worried about. So, there's just over a million allowed gross leasable square feet in the specific plan. To date, there's only 680,100 built or entitled gross leasable square footage. So, there's still 374,900,000 gross leasable area that's remained to be built in that area, so they're fine. Planning area two is the one that we weren't sure about. So, 1.375 million allowed gross allowable square feet in the SP for planning area two. Currently, there's 1,40754 built or entitled gross leasable square footage. So, that shows that there's 34,754 gross leasable square footage overbuilt. So, something to keep in mind here is the specific plan does not allow for density or square footage transfer. So, you can't take the excess from planning area one and shift it into planning area two to allow that, you can't do that. So, you also, you know, we cannot turn back the clock on those approvals, the appeal periods are over, we can't suddenly add mitigation measures now for projects that were in the past, so what do we do? So, planning area one stays the same, still 1,055,000 square feet that remains the baseline. Planning area two, there's a new baseline, and that's 1,409,750 square, square feet. So, moving forward, projects within either individual planning area that propose new square footage that exceeds the revised baseline square footage shall be required to perform an environmental analysis based on the California Environmental Quality Act requirements. So, someone comes in, wants to build in planning area two, you're subject to CEQA right away because the baseline's already been set. So, you go one foot over, you have to do that analysis to figure out what's going on. So, in terms of environmental, this one is also Section 15061B3, the general rule exemption. As it can be seen with certainty, that there is no possibility that the adoption of the resolution may have a significant effect on the environment because the SPA does not propose any new gross leasable square footage that does not already exist or is entitled or vested. The Planning Commission on December 18th of last year also did recommend approval of the Fourth Amendment. And staff does recommend that the City Council approve LR23-0494, adopting a resolution approving the Fourth Amendment to the Temecula Regional Center Plan. That concludes my report. I'm here for questions, and then the actual team that did the analysis is here as well.
Thank you very much. I know we all found it very interesting, but you managed to clear out the chambers behind you during that report. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for staff? Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing. Do we have any comments? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. I will take a motion to move the item.
I'll move the item.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. That passes unanimously, five to zero. Moving on to number 13, approve resolution to amend the Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee TUMP Program. Can I get a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. We do have a very short presentation for you tonight on the TUMP program, TUMP being the Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fund. This is a program that is put together by WRCOG, Western Regional Council of Governments. It is a joint powers agency comprised of all the 18 cities in Riverside County. The City of Temecula has been part of this program for many, many years, and you can see the program was established back in 2002, 2003 to really address the shortfalls in funding of transportation projects and mitigating measures with regards to development, to aid in the development that was going on regionally, but have a means of putting together infrastructure. So, recently, WRCOG conducted a NEXA study, which was reviewed and approved by the Executive Committee at WRCOG, which included our own, at the time, Mayor Stewart. It was part of that last year in 2024 when it was updated and approved. And then we were asked as a city to go ahead and put forth these new fees that were addressed in this NEXA study. And those new fees are set to take effect July 1st, 2025. So, the previous fees that we've brought forth before in a previous study, you can see what the fees were for single-family residential, multifamily, square foot of industrial projects, service commercial, and then office space as well. And this is what is currently in the City of Temecula's Municipal Code and in the ordinance. Now, with the new NEXA study and a look at what would be required for transportation, we know that over the years, construction costs have escalated quite a bit. We saw that through COVID, we saw that through just our own projects here at the city. And so therefore, it would make sense that transportation projects would be quite expensive throughout the region. And so that's what this NEXA study kind of brought to light. This study now proposes not only just new fees, but as you can see, there are fees that are now tiered to address development. So, not all development is the same, so you have square footages that can be on the small end, you have square footages that are on the higher end and to aid in density and to be able to allow development to proceed orderly. But then you can see also, not only were there fee increases for single-family residential, and I'll just point out, for instance, if you're building a house that is 2,700 square feet, under the old fee, you roughly had about $10,000 worth of TUMP fees, but in this new study, you can see it's doubled because of the higher square footage. But then we also have commercial, industrial, those have also gone up as well. But these new fees now represent what it would take to continue to build the infrastructure that's needed for development. So, when developers come into the city and they are looking to do a project, it's typical that they will enter into what's called a credit agreement through WRCOG. And I will say, just to be clear, this fee does not come to the city, it goes straight to WRCOG. So therefore, it's a pass-through fee, the city's not collecting it and taking it out, or taking it over to WRCOG, WRCOG collects the fee. But, a developer will come in, enter into a credit agreement, and by building the facilities or funding the facilities, whatever the facility may be, then they would get credit for the TUMP fees they would have to pay on the individual units that you see in front of you. So, these are going to be the new fees that are proposed through items number 13 and 14 on the agenda. It's not just the ordinance, but it's also the resolution. Next slide, please. So, we wanted to highlight some completed projects, just to be sure that it's understood where all this money is going and where, what has been done in the previous year. So, if you see, you can see the completed TUMP projects that were done. Butterfield Stage Road, we know that one, all the way from Urea to Hot Springs to Chapos, we have the Temecula Promenade Mobility Hub, all the improvements that were done there for the RTA. We have French Valley Interchange, Phase One and Two, Two is getting near completion. But we also have the Winchester Road, $6 million, SR79, Western Bypass, French Valley Project, 703,000. Current projects, Diaz Road, I know the council is very aware of the widening of Diaz, but then also, you recently approved the design portion of French Valley Phase Three, which would be the bridge, and we generously received some TUMP money from WRCOG there. And then upcoming, we have French Valley Parkway, and then we also have Western Bypass as well. So, the first parts were designed, the second parts are going to be the construction portion. So, just wanted to highlight some of the benefits and some of the things that the city has been able to take advantage of with regards to the TUMP program, a longstanding program here at the City of Temecula. And with that, the next slide. So, we ask that the City Council adopt a resolution, ordinance amending the TUMP fee and amending 15.08 of the Temecula Municipal Code to reflect these changes. I'm available for any questions, but I also wanted to point out that Chris Gray is in the audience, he's our Deputy Executive Director at WRCOG. And if there are any technical questions or questions regarding the status of the program, and I'm sure he can answer them, but I'm here as well.
Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing. Do we have any comments? I will now close the hearing, and I'll take a motion to approve the item.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. And that passes unanimously, five to zero. Number 14, introduce ordinance amending the Western-
Chris, thank you for coming from WRCOG, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much. Number 14, introduce ordinance amending the Western Riverside County Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee to update participation. It's important to note that the staff report we just received is a joint staff report for number 13 and 14. So, seeing that my colleagues didn't have any questions for 13, hopefully there's none for 14. With that being said, I will now open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments? I will now close the public hearing, and I'll take a motion to approve item number 14.
Move approval.
That's been moved and seconded. And that passes unanimously, five to zero. We'll move on to our one business item tonight, number 15. Consider topic of proposed safety and security plan measures at City Hall and provide general direction regarding the same at the request of Councilmember Schwenk. Can I get a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I think the title below on the screen is referencing a previous agenda item, so just clarifying there. We're on Agenda Item 15. This item has been placed on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Schwenk. But before I hand it over, I will provide some brief history and context for the discussion this evening. As we can all agree and attest, the City of Temecula places a very high premium on public safety as a foundational component to our high quality of life. We have always taken the same approach towards safety for members of the public and city employees that work, visit, and choose to do business here at City Hall. We have celebrated doing business in this beautiful building for nearly 15 years now. The design features of this public facility, as well as the open nature and the access, was intentionally designed and built into the overall floor plans. Since that time, however, we have made decisions involving the hardening of this building from a security standpoint. We have developed administrative policies, we've tightened our access controls, all in the spirit of protecting city employees and the general public. Since 2021, the City Council has supported additional enhanced and proactive measures for City Hall, which include, in concert with Riverside County Sheriff's Department, we hired a specialized and dedicated deputy that is located in the City Manager's Office. And she provides direct safety presence and support to the Civic Center workforce and the Civic Center Campus Patrol. We also created a special team entitled Community Outreach Resource and Engagement Team, or the Core Team, as we like to call them, which their primary focus is on addressing the quality of life issues in the City of Temecula. They are operating out of the second floor of the Civic Center. Good governance and as a large employer in today's environment requires that we conduct active shooter training for city employees with our RSO partners. Last year, my office commissioned the Riverside County Sheriff's Department to conduct an internal assessment of safety of this campus, the ingress and the egress of this building. Those recommendations and observations will be shared this evening by Captain Regali and Lieutenant Pearson. It should be noted that the City of Temecula does not allow employees to carry weapons into the workplace regardless of being in possession of a CCW permit. In preparation for this conversation this evening, I have had extensive conversations with the city's executive team, whom have provided input, and they have lent support, as has the leadership of the Teamsters Union. I recognize and I acknowledge that the potential introduction of metal detectors, wanding, and X-ray machines may initially be viewed as an inconvenience, a change to our workplace culture. We believe it will ultimately be viewed and appreciated as a safeguard to the workplace, very similar to one entering the CAC or the County Administrative Building in Riverside. With that introduction, I would now like to invite up Captain Regali and Lieutenant Pearson to provide a high-level overview of their finding, proposal, and then we'd like to turn it back to Councilmember Schwenk.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Team, City Residents, just going to get right into our safety and security plan that we put together for City Hall. Next slide, please. So, at the request of the City Manager's Office, as Mr. City Manager just, just said, we were asked to develop a plan to address the safety and security here at the building. The security plan included walkthrough inspections with our SWAT team members, our own personal experiences from all the law enforcement deputies and leadership across the county, as well as a realistic threat assessment of City Hall. Cautious versus paranoid mentality, what does that mean? Being in this profession for 22 years now, I am very cautious, but I'm not paranoid. I understand that sometimes that if I'm cautious about situations, I can mitigate what's going to happen. And that's, that's what we, the approach that we had here while we put this plan together. Next slide, please. City Hall is a beautiful building. It was not designed entirely from a safety perspective at all. It was designed to be very open and inviting, which is what we are here in the city. There's many features, such as multiple entry and exit doors, the ability to drive vehicles completely around this building, and the exterior glass walls also pose security concerns. The very nature of this being a city government and the reality that not all people are happy with the decisions made by elected officials or city employees. Next slide, please. Video cameras and key cards are some of the current safety protocols that we have in place here. Next slide. As, as previously mentioned, we have a dedicated deputy sheriff, that's deputy, right now it's Deputy Jennifer Knitzer. We also have the Core Team on the second floor, we have the Metro Team, they're assigned over here to our Old Town storefront. And in addition to that, we also have deputies who routinely come and go to and from City Hall throughout the day and night. Those are our patrol personnel, and they utilize the, all of the computers down here to complete all their paperwork. Next slide, please. The safety proposal key points are to control the ingress and egress of City Hall, designated public and employee entrances and exits, review of current entrances and exits, used by public employees and the employees, I'm sorry. Next slide, please. Right now, the, the point of entry in City Hall is our, our main entry, the front door. There's a photo of it right here. This is where we have a lot of people coming and going all day long. Next slide, please. This is our proposed employee entrance and exit. So, we would shift that main entry to Council Chambers, which is right outside these doors. So we would shift that main entry to Council Chambers, which is right outside these doors. And this is where we would start to implement a lot of the security machines that we have, we'll talk about here as we continue through the PowerPoint. Next slide, please. This is the west wing, the point of entry on the west wing, so Development Services entry. It's the breezeway right outside Council Chambers here, and that provides access to the, all the way over to the main entrance of City Hall, over to the garage. This entrance would only be used when needed. The restroom doors and hallway doors would be locked. So right now, as it stands today, you can access City Hall through these restrooms during business hours. You can access it from the breezeway, you could go into the restroom, and then from there you can go walk right into the building, and you're right in the middle of City Hall. So what we would do is lock the doors on the inside, on the interior, so they can, citizens can still access the restrooms. However, they wouldn't have that dual access to be able to access City Hall and walk right into the middle of the building. All entrances and exits on the west side of City Hall, that's where we want everything. Everything will be on the west side. Right now, all, there's access points all around the building. Next slide, please. This is a safety proposal screening, so is there just photos of some of the machines used at our courthouses and our county buildings? The screening process conducted uses metal detectors, wands, and X-ray machines. So you could see the walkthroughs, right here, there's a walkthrough for metal detection similar to, that you would see probably at airports. They're probably a lot bigger there than where we would buy here. Next slide, please. There's another example of what they are. Each entrance has a dedicated metal detector, that's the goal. Approximately, they're approximately $5,000 per machine, and we would need a total of three for the, for this building. Next slide, please. So in addition to that, we would have wands. So what happens is when somebody walks through the metal detector, it does alert the security guards that we would have working, then they can do a further screening of the individual to identify what type of metal we're dealing with. It could be a buckle, a belt buckle, but we would at least make sure that we are being thorough with that and identifying that it's not a weapon. These are about $250 apiece, and each screening station would have two, so a total of six. Next slide, please. So this is an X-ray machine. As you can see with the image that's up there, this was a test that we pushed through there to see, so you guys could see what a firearm looks like when it goes through one of these machines, and what the operator would be seeing. The prices for these machines vary depending on the size, make, model. The average cost is somewhere between $50,000 and $75,000, and the suggested location would be the lobby right outside of Council Chambers. Next slide, please. So we had discussions about contracted private security services. We would appoint them to operate the proposed entrances into City Hall. We currently, RSO currently uses them for our current Court Services Division. They are a professional service agreement with Allied Universal, and the cost per hour for each security guard is $25.67. We would need a minimum of three security guards a day to operate the employee and public entrances, and then three guards at 40 hours a week adds up to approximately 30, 80 a week, at 40 hours a week. So additional security will be needed if the conference center is occupied and for council and commission meetings. Next slide, please. Additional considerations for security personnel would be workstations, have the rubber floor mats, chairs, small desks at or near the entrances, access to the break room for lunch and breaks, the communication, so if they do identify something, they will communicate that with RSO. So it'd be the Core Team, or Deputy Knitzer, who's currently in the civic, as the, assigned as the Civic Center Deputy. And then ultimately, I will be responsible to supervise and manage the security personnel, so if we identify any problems, I will communicate that with Allied's leadership, and we will make those changes if needed. Next slide, please. So these are some additional considerations, putting some signage up just outside in the breezeway prior to entering, where we would identify items that are prohibited from entering the building, firearms, knives, scissors, razor blades, chemical agents, just as examples of what we would want to put on these types of signs. Any item deemed a security concern, CC policy, CCW policy discussion, I'm sure for you guys to have. And then we would differentiate between prohibited items with members of the public and city employees in the course of their duties. So an example of that is we do have some gentlemen here that work, and they have to go up and down throughout the building with sharp tools to fix things. So we certainly understand that that's going to be one of the, one of the many things I feel that we would have to excuse and allow them to come in to do their duties. Next slide, please. Kind of went through that already, so signage to the name, proper entrances and exits. So we would need to put some of that out so that people knew or know exactly where to enter. Signage informing the screening process that the bags, backpacks, briefcases will be searched. Just give people who are coming in to the building that warning and have that outside, we post that up. Some stanchions would be needed to direct and block off areas, so that they would, citizens coming in wouldn't be able to access it. And then a couple of things we've already done here is the need to limit key card access and alarming exterior exit doors, as well as we've had conversations with the city attorney and the employee union already. And so there's going to be some cultural changes with the public and the employees regarding this change. So next slide, please. So the end goal is that all entrances and exits are on the west side of the building. Any item deemed suspicious is x-rayed at the employee entrance. Consider the use of a cart from the public, from public to employee entrance for heavy or bulky items. Every person inside of City Hall has been screened for some type of weapon. During the City Hall Commission Nights, the only point of entry will be through Council Chambers, where the metal detectors and X-ray machines are located. And during City Council Commission Nights, the only access to the first floor is the Council Chambers, and the front lobby will be closed off over here. And right now, I was just outside, it's completely wide open. Next slide, please. And that's all we got. Guys have questions?
Before we get into any deliberation, I would like to, first, before we have council comments and questions, to see if there's any public comments, and then we can move from there, if that's okay.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, there is one public comment. Anna Minsberg, Anna Minsberg, come on up, you have five minutes.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I wrote something up because I'm not good with memory. I'm here tonight to speak on a matter that's important to me, and I think it's important to you guys, but just maybe in a different form. So I'm here to see if we could maybe see a middle ground. I was almost murdered six years ago, and I've retained permanent spine, brain, and lung damage. I carry firearm for my own safety and the safety of my children, and I believe every law-abiding citizen should be able to carry solely for that reason and that reason alone. We all know that if you're a public figure in any capacity, there are always going to be threats to your safety, no matter what level of public figure, whatever you're doing. It seems that in California, we have a love affair with putting restrictions and making laws for law-abiding citizens rather than criminals, and I am a law-abiding citizen, but it just seems like there's more and more restrictions for people like me. In saying all this, I always think that there is a middle ground, so I'm asking if there can be a middle on this subject. We are the highest, I have the highest grossing business in this entire area, within a 70-mile radius, actually, and I have worked very hard for that. We have the most niche business in this area, and we get the most foot traffic. We actually have a counter of how many people come through within a week, especially on weeks that are holiday weekends. We get so many tourists, and they are in the thousands in number, and they travel from all over to stop by our shop. There must be a waiver or exception on us business owners in the city of Temecula, where we are registered with City Hall as lawful CCW holders and are able to bring our firearms into City Hall. I do not trust anyone with my life or my family's life other than me, because no one helped protect me other than me. And although I do appreciate our sheriff, and we have probably one of the best counties in California, I believe, and our deputies are wonderful, again, I only, I only rely on myself to protect my family. And in saying that, the first person a criminal is going to shoot in here is probably someone in uniform, because you guys stand out like a sore thumb, which then leaves the rest of us helpless if we don't, can't protect ourselves. And I sure as hell won't stand around, especially if my kids are with me, to depend on somebody else to protect them. I do have an active threat on my life. I am on actually a federal order which protects me and my family, and it's, you know, a piece of paper, but I'm on the DA's radar. I get messages if this person comes within a certain mile radius of me. And I'm also a business owner, a very high-profile business that we have. And so I, I use my firearm, and it's not a foolproof, right? But it's an extra measure for people like me to feel protected, and I think that's very important. And so I appreciate the city's growth and participating in City Council things, but if this gets passed, there will either be less participation from contributing people in the city or a lawsuit somewhere down the line. Both of those options are sucky options, in my opinion. We are bringing a new venture into Temecula that is set to be bigger than any, anything out here, including Pachanga and everything else, and we would like to keep our business in Temecula, if possible, which will benefit everyone. We need less restrictions and laws for the people here who are contributing to better this city and have done the due process of obtaining a CCW, a lawful CCW. Now, I wanted to ask, can a subcommittee for a registry be considered for, you know, people that have gone through the process to carry? And if there's a fee attached to that, I know that people like me would be willing to obtain that registry or be part of that City Hall registry, and I think it would benefit the city as well as business owners and the public like me. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And now kick it off to Councilmember Schwank.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, in all honesty, like, I'm really disappointed we even happened to have this conversation, right? You know, I've been coming to this building for 15 years, and, you know, the city manager mentioned in his opening remarks, just like how beautiful this building is and how warm and accessible it is, and, and this is hard to even think about what we're talking about. But, you know, the last few years have been difficult, right? We've experienced individually and collectively, as a body of elected officials, we've experienced, you know, sort of threats of violence, and there was a study that was conducted with researchers from USD, UCSD, a couple of years ago, and then they branched out and went to Riverside and Imperial Counties and worked through UCR to study this. And the findings are much like what you would expect. The threats of violence are real, especially for elected officials. The one thing that it didn't study was the threats to violence for the workforce, right? For public employees, which is also a significant concern that I have. As, you know, council members, this is not our full-time job. We don't come here five days a week, we're here a few days a week, but we have a dedicated staff of employees that come here every single day, and in some instances, they've put their life on the line when people have come in extremely frustrated. And we had no idea if they're carrying any sort of weapon, let alone a firearm. So, you know, we started having this conversation with City Manager's Office, and so what can we do? We thought it would be good to do a threat assessment, so I really appreciate the time and energy Captain Regali and Lieutenant Pearson put into this, and Deputy Knitzer for even being here, right? We didn't even have a full-time deputy a couple of years ago, so the investments that we've made are much appreciated. But clearly, I think there's more that we can do to protect ourselves, right? Our commissioners and staff, and the public, right? There are people here that are members of the public that need to be safe as well and feel like they don't have to look over their shoulder, you know, does someone have a weapon or someone have a gun or something? So that was just sort of the, the impetus for this, was sort of living this and, you know, dealing with some of the threats that we, that we get. And, yeah, I've got thick skin, and I can deal with it, right? But we shouldn't have to sort of live in fear in some respects of the potential. So I'm really just hoping for, you know, just a robust dialogue today and sort of moving this forward however we can collectively, because I think it'll be, it'll be, it'll be tough initially, right? Like that cultural change that was mentioned, but I think in the long run, I think it will be helpful. And, you know, my last little bit here is, while we don't have much like Councilmember Stewart would like a full-on sheriff's station here, we do have an Old Town Sheriff's Station, and on the second floor, we do have quite a few deputies and sergeants that are here working daily, and we want to make sure that they're also working in a safe environment. So I'm really just looking forward to hearing my colleagues' thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sam, I want to kick off the conversation. First, are there any questions of Lieutenant or our captain out there before? Couple of questions, yes, start with that.
All right. If I can just ask a couple of questions here, as I was just listening to conversation and stuff. Number one, obviously, this is government building. What is our threat level, and where are we at as far as what you guys are seeing in order to be able to put in certain measures of security? Like, for instance, you know, we have low, moderate, substantial, severe, critical levels. Where, I know that can fluctuate where we at today, like, what is a normal level that we work at?
Well, I'll jump in. Good evening. I'll jump in there. I guess the short answer to that question is, we don't know, because people are people, and people are unpredictable, and what sets people off and what triggers them and why they lash out in violent confrontations with coworkers and neighbors is unpredictable. And so I think it'd be, it'd be difficult for me to stand here today and say, hey, I have all kinds of intel that says this building is in immediate danger. I don't have that, right? But that's part of the concern, is that we don't know. And so I guess when we look at this situation, we kind of look to see, and we ask ourselves, right, are we doing everything we can possibly do to make this space as safe and secure as possible for everybody who comes here to do business here, to interact with all of you? And I think that that's probably a fundamental approach to trying to do everything that we can. I follow a gentleman named Gordon Graham. He's an attorney, and he specializes in risk management and liability, and he coined this phrase, which I kind of apply to a lot of different things, and what he would say, when you look across the landscape at a particular situation or environment, is if it's predictable, it's preventable. And so with that in mind, when you scan the landscape, you say, what can we do to make this the best possible scenario so that people can be in this space safely? And I think that's probably the best comprehensive answer I can give you to that.
Absolutely, and I know you guys do a lot of work otherwise with social media stuff to find out if threats are coming. The other question I had, and I don't know if this is for the city attorney, I think I have a few more for you guys, a question for you, looking through SB two- A question for you, looking through SB2, do we, let's say, for instance, a resident or a city council member, do we have the ability or anybody to be able to carry that weapon and lock it up in the garage in order to be able to enter into the building? Or I think, I believe that that's also part of SB2, that that's illegal. Is that correct?
Madam Protem, so, just for context, SB2 is a recently, I think, two years ago or so, bill passed by the state of California in response to the Bruin Supreme Court decision related to conceal and carry privileges in locations where individuals with a conceal and carry permit can carry that firearm. There are a list of sensitive places, following kind of the Supreme Court jurisprudence on the Second Amendment at this point. Government buildings have been identified as those sensitive places, and one of the other statutorily listed places was parking lots of government facilities. In the recent litigation, the Wolford versus Lopez case, that, they didn't challenge the ability of the state of California to prohibit firearms in city halls, local government buildings. One of the provisions that was challenged was the provision that also identified parking lots.
Yes.
And that was upheld. So, the state law that prohibits the possession of the firearm in a local government building, parking lot, was upheld by the Ninth Circuit just this last fall.
So, to my understanding, so if somebody came in, they couldn't lock it up in their car, is that correct?
Not under those provisions. There are, if there's a specific policy, kind of direction, we'd be happy to look into details with kind of this ever-evolving Second Amendment questions. There are certain exemptions that allow firearms to be brought into public meetings, but the general prohibition is on not allowing firearms in local government buildings, and that has been defined to include parking structures.
Thank you. Okay, great. Back to the sheriff, security, let me see the doors. Another concern that I have, I think one of you brought it up, is obviously security. Are we having anybody monitoring this outside doors? Is there video surveillance? Again, I hate to ask these questions out in public because I don't want to give everybody the know of what we're doing here, but we're in this forum, so I'm trying to understand, are we going to have somebody surveilling doors as well to make sure nobody's coming in those doors, since we want to increase the security levels?
Are you asking it with this plan? Is that what we want to do?
Yes, sir.
Well, with contracting with private security, we can ask that they monitor from their positions, but, you know, they're going to be on one side of the building, and that would be where everybody's going to be coming and going in. We do have surveillance cameras equipped and all around the building, but I don't, we're not constantly monitoring that, at least my staff is not.
Okay, yeah, and that was one of my questions, is that something we want to maybe move forward to increase security levels?
It's certainly something that, you know, this body could consider. There's no limitations to that. We can put as many cameras as you would like. We could make provisions for having somebody monitor it more actively. And certainly, that could be enhanced depending on what was going on here at any particular time. The level of whatever meeting was going to happen and if we felt like there needed to be a greater emphasis on monitoring ingress and egress full-time, we can certainly dedicate somebody to do that, whether that's through just your normal hired security personnel or even if we felt like, hey, it's probably important to have a deputy doing this. So, I think all of that is very workable, depends on how much you guys are looking for.
Absolutely. Again, predictability, I think you had said, so...
If it's predictable.
Predictable, right?
It's preventable, yes.
And they're not, I think I spoke to the city manager, they're not armed guards, so they're just, they have no weapons, any of these, right? Okay. The last two items is the bathrooms. I'm a little concerned with that one outside here for the public. I know a lot of people end up using those bathrooms, so is there a different way that we could possibly look at rotating that around as well to give access for public bathrooms out here?
Sure, I mean, I think we can look at that. I think probably if we found a way to secure that door, that you could come in from the outside in, and then, but lock that door that doesn't allow people to come into the actual hallway of the building, they have to come back out and then come through the secured area.
Okay.
I don't think that that would be a problem. I think we could probably figure that out.
For sure. And the last thing was, and I appreciate all your help, just security downstairs. So, what does that look? So, I know we have the door, we have other things, people can kind of get in. That's another concern of mine, if we're going to increase security. So, what does that look for access for that one? Are we considering putting in some type of metal detector downstairs? Or it sounds like we're not at this point in time.
You're talking down?
Down in the garage, yes.
Again, ma'am, I think that anything's possible.
It's just conversation.
We can look at all these different locations and we can add as much security as everyone is comfortable with, and that's certainly something that we would have to take a look at as well.
I'll just add to that. I mean, I don't think that was part of the initial plan in the basement, as that is already secured parking and you must have credentialed and, you know, key card access to access. So, that has already been a hardened environment, in my opinion, so that wasn't something we'd consider down there.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question for the city attorney, and thank you for filling in. I know we're putting you on the spot here. In regards to SB2, just for the knowledge of everyone sitting up here in the audience, with SB2 prohibiting the use of CCWs and firearms in local government buildings, could a body such as a city council go around that even if we wanted to, say, with a registry or allowing certain circumstances where firearms are allowed, if the law specifically states it's not allowed in a local government building? Could we up here make a decision to subvert that law?
Mr. Mayor, that's something I think our office would want to look into a little more to avoid any concerns regarding being preempted by the state in that area. There are certain delineated exemptions that, in certain circumstances, the law's kind of written as individuals can still carry their weapon, you know, if, for example, the head of security provides them clearance. It is not clear, on my reading of law, that that is more broadly applied, so I think that's something that our office could look into and report back if there's direction around that item.
Probably that. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Councilmember Ron?
A quick one. Are we aware of any, at least, let's just say Riverside County, specific waivers or registries that allow individuals to bring firearms onto secured properties?
Councilman Ron, I'm not aware of that this evening. I did not do any research into that specific issue. I'm aware, just in general, about the CAC building. Obviously, we're all very familiar there. We've been there before. I spoke with the captain who oversees that operation and they have the metal detectors. And as far as I understand, there are no exemptions for there. The CCW, the firearms are not allowed in the building at any time.
I'll kick off the conversation unless we have any other comments?
I just, maybe one question before we move into the full-on dialogue. So, I know, and maybe this is for the city manager or Captain Nigali, I know the workforce is wholly on board with this, but we have some teams that work at City Hall and they kind of, they're in and out. And so, how are we going to handle like the come-and-go kind of, will there be privileges for some of our public works teams that are, they're doing work, you know, in and out and you can't expect them to go out the back because they're doing something and then they got to come back around and come in? What is that going to look like?
Yeah, I mean, we've discussed this, and again, I'll use the word a little bit inconvenient and it's, we're upsetting the culture, but I think if you're going to consider this, everyone needs to abide by the standard and the rules. And so, you leave this building as an employee to go run errands, do something at another facility, I would envision the right thing to do is you go back through the line and you're screened again to come into this building and secure it. Otherwise, we're effectively not doing what we're trying to do, so...
No, that makes sense, and I think that's helpful. Thank you.
And I think, you know, we talk a lot about safety, and to me, safety is subjective, right? Some people, like the public speaker, she feels safer with her CCW on her, other people feel, where they, you know, they feel less safe if there's a gun around them. So, the hard part for me is, I see both sides, right? I see that some individuals feel safer with a gun and I see that other individuals feel safe without a gun. So, and that's the hard part for me, is hearing both sides and thinking about both sides of this, and I agree that there's always a middle ground, so I'm not opposed. I don't know what that would look like, looking at the exemptions. It sounds like more work needs to be done, you know, by our city attorney's office to look into the possible exemptions, possible registries, if that's even a thing. But a lot of this comes down to deterrence, you know, and it's hard to look at statistics and say, "Did this actually prevent something without anything ever happening?", right? But the metal detectors, to me, are a deterrent from individuals thinking about coming to City Hall and possibly, you know, harming someone here. And as we know, we've had a lot of contentious meetings, not only at City Hall, or at City Hall, but not only in the city council meetings, but in regular city commission meetings. And even though we, tonight, we have three deputies here at the ready commission meetings and other commission meetings, there's only one deputy. So, we need to think about, you know, not only the city council meetings, not only the commission meetings, but also, you know, everyday staff coming in and out, and how do they feel? And like Councilmember Schwank said, this has the support of our city staff, it has the support of our city employees, it has the support, it sounds like, of our Riverside Sheriff's Office. And taking all that into consideration, we need to think about all of them, you know? For me personally, I also feel safe with a handgun on me, but knowing that and knowing that that's how I feel, I know that's not how everyone else feels around me. And I need to take that into consideration when making these decisions for everyone. And it's also hard, right? Because we talk about the Second Amendment, and although there are things like the Senate Bill 2, which I feel is an overreach of the Second Amendment, as it starts to include all of these public buildings, I feel that from this seat, you know, even though I disagree with it, it's not a place for me to go against state law. So, although I have my personal convictions regarding the Second Amendment, I feel that, you know, right now with the state law saying that handguns and CCWs have no access to government buildings, it'd be interesting to see if we could subvert that, and I know that more thought needs to go into, looking into the exemptions, that would be possible. But as far as the middle ground, and I don't want to make City Hall a place where people don't feel comfortable coming, you know? And again, that goes back to the subjectiveness of safety. Some people don't feel comfortable not being able to come here with a CCW on them, other individuals don't want to be anywhere near a handgun because they're not comfortable with it. So, I want to reiterate, and I know that as far as the middle ground and the compromise, that every one of these meetings is livestreamed. You can always submit public comments if you don't feel comfortable here in either direction, to our city clerk prior to a meeting that can be, you know, put into the record officially. And I also agree, the public speaker, you know, talked about how she won't ever relinquish her CCW, she doesn't feel comfortable coming into City Hall, and I feel a compromise for that, is that as the mayor, if you ever have something where you have a business permit or a license or something you need to obtain in City Hall, I could personally take that paperwork for you, drop it off at the correct department and make sure that it all gets filed completely. And I think that's something like little things like that that we can do, because we are a community, and I understand, I want you to feel safe, I want the community to feel safe, I want everyone to feel safe inside City Hall. We can do things like that, you know? We're a city of 110,000 people. As Temecula always continues to grow, we still stay this small-town, family-friendly community. And little things like that, I feel like go a long way. And I always say, my favorite part about council policies is their ability to be changed. And if any time, whatever we decide, tonight, if we implement these metal detectors and the wands and the security detail, if at any time in the future that we feel, hey, this isn't the best route, we made a wrong decision, we can always revert back and change our city council policy. So, the best part about these policies is their ability to be changed. But from my seat here, knowing my position on the Second Amendment, knowing my comfortability with a CCW and handling of a firearm, and understanding that not everyone feels the same way I do, I want people to feel safe, and I want this to be a safe environment coming in here. And knowing that our sheriff deputies believe that this is, these are things that harden City Hall and they make it harder for people to injure anyone inside or around this building, it's hard for me not to implement this at the direction of our deputies. But saying that, there are always middle grounds, there are always compromise, and there is always the ability to retrace our footsteps if we go down a wrong direction or path. But again, I appreciate the presentation, I appreciate you answering all of our questions, and I appreciate the city attorney stepping in for Mr. Peter Thorson, who's gone today. And I'm looking forward to hearing everyone else's opinions, if anyone has any. Councilmember Stewart?
Well, as someone who's been to Washington DC and Sacramento, you cannot walk into any of those buildings without going through the exact same security we're suggesting here. So, it's like, I'm a Second Amendment guy also, but if Washington DC is doing it, it's not just the state of California with their, you know, Senate bill, it's in Washington, it's everywhere where government is. It's all about protecting, you know? And I honestly believe workplace violence is probably a bigger concern than just someone randomly coming off the street. So, I, you know, and for the people who work here, I would be more in favor of this plan, especially, you know, for them, because like you said, they're here, or Zach said, they're here five days a week, you know, and they got to spend all this time. And you never know the mental capacity of somebody if they're having a, you know, the world's worst whatever, and they come to work and feel like it's time to check out and we don't want to check out with anybody else, so... So, that's why I would be in favor of it, just because literally you can't go into any government building today outside of maybe a city council building, and a lot of those are already probably hardening as we speak too. So, once you get above this level, you just can't walk in, so that's my opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Ron?
Yeah, so, I mean, well said. I, you know, I think the question that was posed earlier was, you know, are we doing everything we can to keep Temecula safe? And I think plain and simple, the answer is no. And it's no fault on the city, it's no fault on, you know, Sheriff's Department or anything else, or the original designs to City Hall. It's just, you know, society has changed and the risks, while we may not have, you know, active threats to City Hall, you know, I think we recognize that it's still, you know, a sensitive location that deserves, you know, a higher level of protection. And, you know, I really liked what you said, if it's predictable, you know, it's preventable. And I think that goes with, you know, the doors, the, you know, the windows, the other access areas that you were talking about, you know? So, I mean, yeah, we can and probably should be doing more. You know, and Stu, what you just said, from the White House to airports to courthouses, county facilities, I mean, even Knott's Berry Farm, right? You can't go into these facilities with the weapon, even if you have a CCW, even if you have all the paperwork and all the qualifications and training and everything else, you know, just simply not allowed. So then, you know, from my perspective, yeah, I'm a huge advocate of, you know, the Constitution. I mean, that's our solemn promise, right? And so, the question to me really comes down to, if the city were to enact any one of the policies we discussed tonight, does that violate the Constitution and specifically does it violate the Second Amendment? Or for that matter, the First Amendment, as far as free speech goes? If it does, then every government facility who enacts the same measures are now guilty of violating the Constitution. And so, you know, Stu, I like your pragmatic side of things because you're like, hey, I've been to DC, I've been to Sacramento, I can't go anywhere and just walk in with a handgun, you know? I actually spent some time going through the LexisNexis search engine for, you know, court cases and so forth, and, you know, Randy's laughing if she's saying, of course you did. But, you know, to try and find, is there case law? Have there been challenges? There certainly have been challenges, and there has been a lot of dialogue, you know, in the judicial on this specific issue. It's still working its way through court on, you know, some of the challenges with California and all that, but as it stands right now, no, the both state and federal courts have decided and put opinions out that this is not a violation. And again, I'd go back to, if it is, then every government facility who enacts this is now guilty of violating the Constitution. So, is what Temecula then proposing, is that considered overreach of government authority? And I think the answer is no, because we're just exercising the same authority that other government entities have. The next question really comes down to, is public safety and the safety of everyone, you know, council aside, right? I mean, we get a lot of, you know, information and things, you know, sent to us and knowledgeable about, you know, threats and so forth, but it's the public safety... about, you know, threats and so forth, but it's the public safety that I think is our solemn promise. And is public safety of everyone, the employees, and the people who visit City Hall, is it protected to the maximum extent that we can, under the guidelines of the law? And again, I would say the answer today is no, it is not. And so it's, this is a lot more than just a simple academic discussion, because I could sit down over a cup of coffee and chew on the Second Amendment for hours and hours, right? I find this a fascinating topic, and, and yeah, I'm a huge proponent of it. You know, I'm not afraid to say that I also have a CCW, not afraid to say that I'm also a lifetime member of the NRA. You know, these are, these are things that, you know, you do as an individual, and you make those choices. But do I give up a firearm if I'm going to see, you know, our congressional representative or our state representative at the Capitol? And the answer is yeah, I willingly do that. And, you know, and my assumption is, especially in a location like this, and we spoke about this a little bit earlier, but, you know, if an incident were to occur, there's, there's a reason why you also are wearing uniforms, so you can identify one another. I don't think you need me or anyone else playing Wyatt Earp from The Dais, joining in, you know, you know, at, on an incident, because all you're gonna see in your periphery is some dude standing in the background with a firearm, you know? And that creates a dangerous situation for all of us. And I'll admit, I don't have anywhere near the training that you do. So I don't think the public should feel safe with me, you know, exercising that authority during a council meeting either, right? And so, you know, this is where we're landing today in this conversation, is, you know, again, this isn't just, you know, an academic conversation, this is, you know, a real serious conversation about the public safety of our employees, who are here much longer than we are. We represent a fraction of what this city represents, and the safety of that, and my default is to provide the highest level of protection that we can. Thanks.
Well said. Mayor Protam?
All right, thank you so much. Well, first off, I just want to say thank you guys for the presentation, and thank you staff for everything, because I as well am, you know, having almost 10 years of security experience myself, and also having been a CCW holder as well. Looking at everything, it's important, it's important to beef up security. We know that there are threats, we know that there are things going on, however, we need to do it wisely. And a couple of things, so, you know, as for myself, when I heard and spoke with staff about improving things like bulletproof glass, I'd like to have even monitoring security, because those are some of those areas that can really make a difference, I believe, for our, for our City Hall, to make sure that nobody's getting through, there's a better, better advantage to be able to see all, just everything as a whole. Also, I mean, my concern, too, is just adding more money to paying for stuff. I want to make sure that we're putting our money to the right things, like bulletproof glass. I know right now that, I'm gonna be honest with you, this is a very sensitive and emotional topic, I think we all know it. It's kind of where we tiptoe a little bit here, to kind of talk about this area. It's controversy nationwide, however, I think what we're here to do is really talk about security, and how we can do the best for our city here. I don't want to be here to debate, but I do want to look at, like you were saying, Ron, is, is people's rights. You know, it is still right now, with the, with the courts going through everything and the process, and it might be there forever, you know, it has been. But my question is, is there some ways that instead of maybe putting up the metal detectors, that we can start beefing up security in other areas? And maybe as the dust is up and going around, we can wait until it settles to be able to look at really what's going on, as far as coming from the courts in the next year or so? You know, I had an opportunity to talk to a lot of people in these last couple of months, I've talked to Kelly Ciarto, who was on the, on the committee for SB Two and the sensitive places. To my understanding, there was 29 sensitive space, sensitive places initially, it's now down to 12. And this is what is up for debate right now. And so for me, I mean, he's, he's not in favor for it. He even told me, I was very surprised that over the legislation, that they don't, their guards are not armed, but they can bring in weapons, which I was shocked, so I'm like, okay, so everybody else in the building can protect themselves, but the guards aren't gonna protect everybody. So I found that kind of an odd, odd thing, and he was even kind of laughing about it. I had a wonderful opportunity to talk to Sheriff Bianco just a little bit, and he even agreed things like the bulletproof glass would definitely be a great security measure, and to move forward with things like that. And, you know, some of the things we gotta think about is, you know, what is a metal detector gonna do if somebody comes in and truly wants to do harm? And is a metal detector, is it gonna keep them from walking in with a gun? You know, if somebody really wants to come in and do some harm, realistically, they're gonna come in with a rifle, they're gonna come in with something that's gonna do major damage, because there's a lot of people here. So it's just something to consider. I'd almost rather start with funding some of the beefier stuff, if we can, if that's really what we're concerned about, and then maybe come back later on. Also, I've had opportunities just recently to talk to Rick Travis, from the California Rifle Pistol Association, and he's been really educating me a lot more on the sensitive places, and how they're even seeing it, the California Rifle Pistol Association, other police agencies are seeing that this is a hindrance for people's Second Amendment. And me personally, I'm, I can't be in favor for that. I can be in favor to beefing up security and doing things like that, but I'd like to kind of see, I think, how our residents said, can we find that middle ground? Is an area that we can find middle ground to get security, but we're not gonna start doing a scavenger hunt for people who are coming in with anything, because we got bulletproof stuff up here. I know if I duck, I'm gonna be safe, but my question is, is what about everybody else out there? So that's just kind of some of my areas that I have concerns about, I know there's a whole bunch others, but I do have concerns that, I think my biggest thing, and Ron, you were hitting on it, for me, and maybe other government buildings do it, but doesn't mean Temecula has to do it, we're very different. And I don't believe that we should be able to take away somebody's First Amendment, or Second Amendment right, in order to be able, in order to be able to exercise their, their, wait, I'm sorry, they shouldn't be able to give away their Second Amendment right in order to exercise their First. So why am I allowing somebody to have to put their gun away, but yet to come in here to speak? And people like Anna, who I know very well, I get concerned, because I know her story, and I know there's other people like her out there. And I've had threatens, I've had threats to me when I leave here, so now, when I do get my CCW back, I have to leave my gun at home, drive here, be here, possibly threatened, and go all the way home without having my pistol on me. That's concerning. That's a concern for me as a councilwoman, as your colleague. So, I don't know, it's, it's one of these things where I'm gonna abide by the law, but just things to think about. What about these individuals who are gonna park in this parking lot, who want to be able to come and speak? They're not gonna be able to park in there, they're not gonna be able to bring their cars here, and they're gonna have to leave their weapons at home, too. So that's just some of my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been great, I think the discussion's fantastic. Again, like, it's really just hard that we're even having to have this conversation. I feel left out with the whole Second Amendment conversation, like, I own a gun, too. Mayor Protam and I have spent time at the range together. To Councilmember Ron's point, I don't know that, we're competent, right? Like, we're competent, but I don't know that you all want us defending, defending or protecting The Dais, so, to your point. I also have some issue with the idea that the Capitol Police or the CHP aren't armed. I always feel like they're armed when we go there.
I was thinking more about the CHP.
No, they are.
Yeah, I'm almost, I mean, I'm, I don't.
They have CHP and others.
Yeah, so the CHP is, is in charge of the protection of those swing spaces and the Capitol itself. Yeah, and it's a big ordeal to go through those spaces, right? Much like it is in Washington DC. Even, you know, the Supervisors Building in Riverside County. I mean, you get searched going into Storm Stadium, right? You don't go through metal detectors, but they're looking through your bags, right? Go to a Padre game at Petco Park, you go through metal detectors, you cannot carry concealed in Petco Park, right? For a reason. So I, I really understand your concerns, like, I really do. And to hear your story, it's, this is difficult, right? I would like us to, and I feel like if I can craft a motion here, I would like us to approve this item, sort of as is, right? Metal detectors, wands, everything we've talked about, with the direction to have the city manager's office and the city attorney look into the possibility of an exemption, versus not passing this, sort of like, think about it for a while. We need to, we need to do this, and so I think, like, that's a, that's a pretty good middle ground. If we can legally do that, I'm, I'm open to it. I was never on the, on sort of like, we'll throw the baby out with the bathwater with CCWs, right? Like, I don't necessarily like the idea that I'm hearing, like, how many people have guns here, I can't imagine you all are, like, super excited about that. But, but at the same time, like, that's your right, right? Like, as, as long as, like, you know, if there, if there is a way to do something like that, that, that wouldn't be challenged in court, I would be okay with it. I wouldn't like it, but I would say at the, at least, you know, you're not having a random person come in with a gun, right? Like, that's really important. And unfortunately, there's not a lot of folks here, but there have been instances where we know people have brought weapons in here, right? Like, we just know, and that's scary, right? We have people setting up meetings with staff, and, and, you know, our city clerk comes to mind, where she is an elections official, and people are reaching out, and, and just all the controversy surrounding elections, and, you know, the team that we have here walk downstairs and meet with people in a hot second, right? Because that's who we are, that's what we do. Mr. Mayor, you're like, I'll deliver, you know, a permit, you know, that's just what we do, right? That's just what we do as a team here, and as a workforce. But we're not doing enough to protect our workforce. And so I would just like us to move the item with that caveat, say, direct the city manager's office and the city attorney to look into the possibility of some sort of registry. Not opposed to it. I don't like it, right? Like, I wouldn't probably sign up for the reg, like, but at the same time, you know, it's something that I think, okay, well, that's the middle ground, and we could sort of get there, right? I think it's more important to move this through and say, hey, are we doing enough? No, this is gonna help us get there to a safer space. And I think we need to get to a safer space sooner than later, because whatever this costs, if anything happens to anyone, and I know this is just, you know, a hypothetical, right? But if anything happens to anyone, I, I wouldn't be able to live with myself, that we sort of like, put this on hold for a while, to think about it and talk about it. Like, we need to move on this, and, and I think, I think we can get there.
If I can just add, no, and I appreciate that. I'm concerned about a couple of things, also, what about the people when they, when they exit here, like I said? I'm concerned that they're not gonna have the right to defend themselves, what happens if that happens. You know what I'm saying? It's just a concern. And then I look at a stadium, and it's, it's a private entity, where we're a public entity, to be able to have people come in and, and speak their mind, and speak truth, and we've got businesses that I want to hear from. You know, it was interesting, because when we think about public comments and adding them, you know, one of the things I know we used to do is we used to read some of the public comments before, and we shut that down. But now, you know, I might not get, I might not get the information from one of my constituents. Maybe I'm in a meeting right before here, and I, I don't have their information. So there's just, there's some loopholes, and as much as I appreciate the security, and I could definitely get behind beefing things up, I just can't get behind the metal detector part. I think that's the only hindrance that I have to this, and I think anything else, I would definitely be behind, to really make sure that council and staff and residents are 100% safe.
Absolutely, no, I appreciate everyone's perspective, like we've all said up here tonight. And I think so much of what we do as government, and as even public safety, fire and police, is reactive, you know? So it's, it's almost a positive to be in a position up here, to be able to be proactive. And like you said, Councilmember Schwank, nothing has happened, and the hope is that we implement this before something happens, you know? Because I'd much rather be in a position that we are in today, where we're being proactive, rather than an incident happened, and now we're trying to react to what had happened. So I'm happy to say that, that we're being proactive in this instance, in my frame of mind. And I also want to say that, similar to the Capitol in Sacramento and DC, I'll be the first to say that we are the capital of Riverside County, in my mind. No offense to our friends in Marietta and all around Riverside County, but I think that, that we always lead the way, and this is another instance where leading the way, but I completely agree with what you said, Councilmember Schwank, and the motion that you made, and I will second that motion. Do we have any other deliberation?
Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Mayor, can I, before you take a vote, can I, can I just clarify a couple of things, from my own understanding? I heard, I heard a lot of things tonight, I heard, you know, alternative ideas, beefing up security, putting people behind, you know, CCTV cameras to ballistic glass, none of that is, is costed out. Like, I, I, I mean, that, that might even be three times the amount of the proposal that's in front of you tonight. So I just, I just need to say that. I don't know if that's the expectation at all, that we're gonna explore any of that, or if I need that direction to go down that route, but that was not something that we've, we've costed. So I just, I just want to make that clear. And the other thing I heard was, you know, at least I think it's part of the motion, is to, to kind of move this forward, ask the city attorney to clarify sort of the legalities and the laws, and everything that we talked about tonight. But if there, if there's a subsequent City Council CCW-type conversation exemption, would you still be taking the same action you are tonight? Because in, in my mind, you know, that, that has a huge bearing on sort of the action that you're taking tonight. I mean, if, if, if all CC, if you landed on all CCW registry of some exemption port, I would seriously question sort of, why are we going through this, this exercise tonight? You know, because I think I heard today, in Riverside County, there's been 50,000 CCW permits issued. That's a lot, okay? And so it's, it's just something that I want us to think about, and I, and I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't bring this up. So if this is gonna move forward, would you still move this forward, even despite, without this other information, and regardless of any exemptions for CCWs? I guess that's my, my question to the body.
Can I add something real quick?
Absolutely.
If I could just add this, and I'm sure this is actually exactly what your, what the attorney will be looking at, so I'm looking at California Penal Code 26230, that talks about the special places. And Part A is saying, "A person granted a license to carry a pistol, revolver, or a firearm capable of being concealed upon a person pursuant to," and then they have the sections, "shall not carry a firearm into any of the following," and one of those is this building, or a building like this. So there is no exemptions, the only question that I have is for federal, because it does trump over, like, some of the state regulations or laws. So if we have federal agents, or we have people who have federal, what do they call them? There you go, see, thank you, just an ability to be able to carry federally, are they able to do that? So as far as CCWs, we're not able to, but anybody federal, that's kind of the next question. I would like to at least know in the future.
Okay, so I'll just answer really quick, just to answer our city manager. So my motion was the presentation as presented, right? So that there was some conversation about, you know, some of the things that Mayor Protam offered up, that was not my motion. My motion was as presented. So what we received, I think we're okay with, especially with just like, the way that it would sort of play out. Now, I offered up the, the, the city attorney sort of dialogue as an olive branch, to try to get 5-0. You didn't take that, so, I mean, I think it would come back, and we would probably end the same way. So I'm willing to remove that, and just move forward as is, no CCWs. If you would like to amend your second, I'll amend my first.
I will maintain the second.
Okay, so I'm gonna clarify, just to make sure. So I understand that there is a first by Councilmember Schwank, a second by Mayor Kalphus, to go ahead and move forward with the SB Two exclusions of all CCWs in the public building, and to go ahead and move further in implementation of metal detectors. And the last item is to direct the city attorney to look into any sort of federal exemptions in regards to CCW carrying under federal law, and that is what I understand the motion to be.
Yes.
Okay, I have a first, and I have a second. Councilmember Ron?
And that passes four to one, with Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Protam Alexander voting no. All right, next we'll move to items for future city council agendas. Do any of my colleagues have any items?
I do. So I would like to bring forth the type 90 license, and it's... So I would like to bring forth the Type 90 license, and it's been requested by the one Type 90 to extend the music hours, 30 minutes, but still closing at midnight. So basically, unchanging the close time, he just wants to play music 30 minutes longer. So I would like to bring that forward, to make that amendment to the entertainment license that we have currently.
I'll second that. That has been first and seconded. And that passes five to zero. Councilmember Ron?
All right, I have one item, and, boy, the segue is pretty astonishing. If it's predictable, it's preventable. It's not only predictable, but we've actually had several fires that have started in the Temecula Creek area in the last year or so, including one that happened during the LA incidents. Unfortunately, you know, Cal Fire and Chief Crater were very aggressive in response. What I'm asking is that we, as a city, move more aggressively toward maintaining those portions of the city that are high fire risk. Right now, you know, it's just not being done. It's been a couple of years, we have the CWPP in place, we can wait for grant funding to come onboard to, you know, fund these projects, but, you know, I think that's a poor excuse for something that we know is a high risk, and continues to serve as a high risk. So what I'm asking is that the staff bring back a, sort of a pathway for us, looking at a defined area of Temecula Creek on the south end of town, which is part of the CCW, no, sorry, CWPP, sorry. Yeah, getting my acronyms, that's funny. But, you know, part of that wildfire protection plan, define the area, identify owners and collaborators who need to participate with us in cleaning up that risk. Any access or jurisdictional issues with regulatory research agencies, kind of go through that. And then, most importantly, I think, and this kind of sets a tone, is I think our city may be well positioned to declare a state of emergency on this topic, so that it accelerates this. I don't think there's any time to wait on protecting the city. And, you know, I'm just asking for support for council to give staff some opportunity to bring back some plans. And quite frankly, I'm not taking my foot off the gas on this one. I think, you know, we've got a lot of areas in the city, this serves as a model to get things done the right way. But, you know, I think we need to, we need to move quickly and be responsive, because, you know, again, we know this area is the high-risk area right now in the city that poses a substantial threat. And we also know that, you know, through homeless encampments and other sort of negligent and other acts, this area does actually catch on fire regularly. So I'm just asking that we bring that back and do something very quickly this year to resolve some of those issues.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Has been moved and seconded. And that passes five to zero. I do as well have one item for future agenda. This is regarding, I'm asking my colleagues tonight, on a topic regarding the fentanyl crisis. We all know the Capelluto family, who has a heart-wrenching story regarding fentanyl. I would like them, if my colleagues agree, to be able to come to City Council at the next meeting and give a presentation regarding, you know, the fentanyl crisis, new legislation that is passed in regards to Prop 36 and Alexandria's law, and really just give an update and present the council and the public with the ongoing and never-ending, it seems like, fentanyl crisis, and what we can do as a city and staff and as a community to combat this crisis. And that's it.
Second that.
That has been first and seconded. Please vote. Thank you for that, and it passes five to zero. Do my remaining two colleagues have anything for future City Council agenda items?
Seeing none, do we have a City Manager report?
Just one quick item, Mr. Mayor. I think I have a slide here. Wanted to acknowledge the good work of our Public Works Department, managing our general contractor out there on the freeway, French Valley Parkway Phase 2. They did wrap up the hard closure of the northbound on-ramp, and I believe that is either open this morning, I think it did open this morning, is that right, Ron? Or tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, 6:00 AM. That northbound on-ramp off of Winchester will be reopened to the general public. So we wrapped up a little bit early. We'll get through this holiday weekend with no hard closures for remaining work. However, we do have a Phase 2 of this work that needs to be done, which involves the loop ramp there, that you can see in the red, and, but we won't begin that hard closure until February 18th, and also about three and a half weeks, three to four weeks. And detours will be in place, it'll be well-advertized. We appreciate the patience of the traveling community, but things did actually go very smooth, in our opinion, for the last month. And so, work will be done again, and we're getting very close to the finish line on this very large Capitol project. So that concludes my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. City Attorney report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to note that the City Council met earlier in closed session on the two items listed on the agenda, and that there is no reportable action under the Brown Act. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And that will be the end of the meeting. I will adjourn our City Council meeting. See you in two Tuesdays.